Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the MyHingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
On July 22nd, 2025, this meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I want to know for the record that this meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording this meeting this evening? Seeing none, next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could stand and face the flag of our nation for those willing and able.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, our police officer interviews and potential appointments. The potential candidates tonight are Daniel Martini, Dylan Dersch, and Jenna Hurtberg. Chief, do you want to say anything preliminarily before we bring the candidates in? I'm sorry, before you do that, Chief, I'm going to know for the record that attending tonight's meeting, myself, William Ramsey, the Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Julie Straley is participating remotely this evening. With that, Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks so much. So, we're interviewing three candidates tonight. These aren't coming before us in a typical way. There's a new hiring process from civil service, which is called the Alternate Hiring Path, and it allows us to hire outside of the typical written examination where we get the list and we call up for the list and interview based on that. So, this is put out, we put out for lateral transfers, these all three tonight, or two of them are already currently certified post-police officers. One is in the process of completing the police academy. She'll be done in a little over a month. So, it's a little different than the typical ones where these officers can start pretty much immediately and help us bring up our numbers during a difficult time in the summer that we're usually pretty busy. And we're already down six officers right now, so this will help bring those numbers up.
You're down six?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. All right, with that then, why don't you bring in the first candidate? Come on up, you can sit right there. All right, good evening, Daniel. Good evening. All right, I'm Bill Ramsey, I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Liz Klein, the Board Member, and Julie Straley is participating remotely this evening. All right, so Daniel, first question I've got for you is if you could take two minutes, tell us a little bit about your background, your upbringing, so you can introduce yourself to us and to the public.
Sure. My name's Dan Martini. I started my career in law enforcement in 2017, so I've been doing it for about eight years now. I've had the privilege for the last four years of working for the Town of Hingham as a special police officer and also an assistant harbor master, so working on the waterways of Hingham. I've really grown to love the community here and enjoy working for the police department and also for the community, and I'm excited to hopefully be able to do that in a full-time position.
At the end of the first question I've got for you is you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country, right? You could work in any department in Massachusetts. Why do you want to come here?
So, one of the biggest attractions for Hingham Police for me was working, you know, like I said, as a part-time police officer and also assistant harbor master, working the community events and seeing how the police department here interacts with the community. It's a model of the relationship between the police department and the community, something that I really love and something that I would love to contribute to, and that was kind of the biggest reason that I chose Hingham.
The Hingham Police Department's community policing efforts are among some of the best in the state. It's really a cornerstone of the department. What skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work in our community?
Probably the two biggest things I would think is humility and good communication skills. Remembering that at the end of the day, police officers are people and we're no different than the community. We're just entrusted with a different type of set of responsibilities to protect and to serve the community, but at the end of the day, we're still people and that we should treat people with the same respect we would expect other people to give us.
Well, you're off to a good start. Those are good answers. Let me turn it over to Liz.
Excellent. Well, it's nice to meet you and thank you for serving in Hingham already as a special and assistant harbor master. You touched on community policing, which obviously is very important to us and a value of the department. And you talked about humility and good communication. What other skills do you think are very important that you can bring into this department?
So, you know, touching, like I said, on communication, that's probably the biggest thing, right? Like, being able to talk to people, being able to understand what somebody's going through when you're dealing with their type of situation. That's a huge one for me. That's like paramount. I think that's where a lot of the issues with community relations and policing go wrong. It's not being able to communicate effectively with people. I'd say that's probably the biggest one that, you know, comes to my mind.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as a special and assistant harbor master, your experience in Hingham, what has been the biggest issue or conflict that you've experienced?
So, for the most part, I've had mostly positive, you know, interactions. Like I said, some of the things that I've loved the most have been the community events. I think something that I initially saw when I first started was there wasn't a lot of coverage of things or people didn't know about stuff. I had people that come up to me and say, "Oh, I didn't know the police department was doing, you know, a touch-a-bot event at the harbor so that, you know, people could come see the equipment that we have and get on the boat." So, one of the things I know that Hingham Police have been doing really well is, you know, reaching out to people through social media like Facebook and Instagram. And, you know, over the last four years, I've actually seen a change in that. Initially, you know, it was like, "Oh, I didn't know this was going on," and now it's, "Oh, I saw this, I'm so happy to come down and bring my kids to see the boat or the police cruiser." So, I think that's something that's, you know, definitely come a long way and really, really good for the town.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Turn to Julie for any questions.
Hi, Daniel. I'm sorry, I couldn't meet you in person tonight. Thank you for coming. I have two quick questions. One is, what quality do you think is most important in a police officer? And if you could give an example of a situation in which you have been able to employ that quality?
Absolutely. I think being able to make decisions under stress or under pressure is something that's extremely important for police officers. Just recently, we had an incident in the harbor where somebody was suffering from a medical emergency. I wasn't the first to dispatch the call, but I happened to be nearby. So, you know, all that wasn't my call to go to. I made the decision, you know, having a background in good training in first aid and being a CPR and first responder instructor, I made the decision to go to that call and along with another one of the assistant harbor masters, perform CPR. So, it's one of those, you know, I think that's probably one of the biggest things that you can have as a police officer, is being able to make those decisions, you know, difficult decisions, under pressure, you know, with not a lot of time.
Thank you. I think that my next question you might have just answered in a way, so if this is a repeat, feel free to change it up. But how are you dealing with stressful situations? So, if you can give an example of how you deal with a stressful situation, I think you might have just given one, but if you have another one.
Sure. Dealing with them, I think I got kind of some of the best advice in one of my police academies that I went to. It was just basically have a big friend group, have a big family support group around you, people that you can talk to outside of the people that you work with directly, you know, being able to talk with people about the incidents that you go to, how it makes you feel, you know, and all of those things, and being able to process them. There's a lot of, I guess it's a lot different now. It used to be probably a lot worse, but there's a lot of acceptance around the idea of, you know, making sure that individually we're okay. And like I said before, police officers are people. They're not, it's not this, you know, separated, you know, being. It's, at the end of the day, I experience emotions the same way that other people do. So, being able to process those and deal with them in an appropriate way is probably the best thing you can do to deal with that stuff.
Thank you, Daniel.
You're welcome.
All right. Daniel, thank you very much. I'm going to have you step outside, and Chief, if you don't mind bringing the next applicant in, that'd be great.
Can you see Harbor Media? Are they giving us any signals? I can't see them. Okay.
You can have him sit right there. Good evening. Bill Ramsey, I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Liz Klein, Board Member, and behind you on the screen is Julie Straley. So, it's Dylan, is it Dersch?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Dersch, take about two minutes to tell us a little bit about your background, so you can introduce yourself to the board and to the public that's here.
My name's Dylan Dersch. I grew up in, over on Gardner Street. Born and raised in Hingham my whole life. Both my parents born and raised here, too. I've always loved this town. I graduated high school in 2019. I played hockey in Hingham. I played lacrosse there as well in high school. When I graduated, I went to Norwich University Military School up in Vermont. Was there for about a year and a half, and then I decided to enlist in the military, in the Army. And when I came back from my basic training, when I was being deployed for a year, so I went there, came back and transferred to Ohio State, graduated there in '23, and then when I graduated, I immediately took the civil service exam, got on, and I applied to a few towns. I got on at Brickline, so I've been in Brickline for the past year, and I just decided I want to go back to the community where I grew up in and I want to serve here.
Great. What was your M.O. Western in the military?
Twelve Bravo, combat engineer, sir.
Oh, great. And where did you deploy to?
Djibouti.
Oh, in Africa?
Yes.
Excellent, great, okay, excellent. All right, well, you kind of answered my first question by why you want to, why you would want to come to Hingham, so let me ask you a second question. What kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work here in our community?
I think communication, just so they can talk to the people that they serve. They need communication, dedication to the community, just be able to go out and just talk. Over at Brickline, I quite often just get out of my cruiser in our busy area called Coolchorn, I go out and walk around, talk to the public, try to integrate myself better there.
Excellent. And I'll turn it over to Liz for the next set of questions.
Excellent. Well, it's nice to see you, Dylan. Glad you applied. And I know your family and appreciate your service to our community and country already. Building on what Bill said, what skills do you think that you have in addition to communication and dedication that would really benefit the Hingham Police Department?
I think integrity. Just driving around in my cruiser at work, I try to just follow all the rules of the road, try to go the same speed limit that I want to enforce the laws that I wouldn't uphold myself. Communication. I'm a hard worker. Both my parents are, we're called hard workers. Always just tried to be hardworking growing up in the house and do as much I can.
Excellent, thank you. What, can you talk more about communication? Maybe give an example of a difficult situation where you use communication skills?
Yeah, just at work, we have to quite often be called for a range of calls, like from domestic disputes to mental health calls, and you have to be able to talk them down, remind them where they are, try to get them to seek help. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And I'll turn to Julie.
Hi, thank you. And Dylan, thank you for interest in coming back to home to Hingham. What quality do you think is the most important in a police officer? Can you give an example of a situation in which you've employed that quality?
I would say integrity. As I said, I was, when I'm at work, I try to just follow the rules of the road and just do the right thing even when no one's looking. And yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, how are you dealing, how do you do dealing with stressful situations? Can you give an example of how you deal with stressful situations?
Yes, at work, I've been through quite a few stressful situations, both being deployed and being in the, and working for Brickline. I just try to take a deep breath, count to three, and really helps me out.
Okay, thank you.
Great, well, thank you. All right, Mr. Dersch, I'm going to have you stand outside, and we're going to bring in the next applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, come on up, you have to sit right there. Ms. Herbert, correct?
Yes.
I'm Bill Ramsey, I'm the Chair of the Select Board. I call Legalist Klein.
Chief, thank you very much. So let me just check in with my colleagues. Because we have two that are laterally transferred in, they're already working in law enforcement, obviously Ms. Herbert's in the academy, but her background check came back fine and obviously she seems like a strong applicant. We are down six officers because of retirements and other issues. So I think I am comfortable with moving forward tonight with a vote, given the fact it will help overtime costs, we can get these officers on the road quickly, other than the applicant in the academy. But let me just check in to see what Julie and Liz think. So I'll turn to Liz first. What are your thoughts on that?
I agree. We know this is, we've been, we have challenges with recruiting and retention and vacancies and the stress that that causes to the department with overtime and forced overtime. So this certainly is a priority to move quickly. Can you just, Chief, can you just talk a little bit about the conditional status? So two, there are lateral moves that are already certified with post. So what still needs to happen next?
So with those two after a conditional offer of employment, they'll give notice to their current agencies and then they can start here as soon as that time is up.
Okay.
With Jenna, she, sort of the same process, but her academy sponsorship will transfer to us from Westfield and she'll graduate the academy and then go through a standard field training program. The other two that are already certified police officers will have a much more abbreviated field training program, so they'll be able to start on their own relatively quickly.
Okay. They still go through the medical examination, right? The physical tests?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's what would be next?
Yeah, so they would have done them with their agencies originally, but we do redo them.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for explaining that. I'm comfortable moving forward.
Julie, what are your thoughts?
Well, I understand about the need to fill these vacancies and from reviewing the materials about these applicants, I feel comfortable with making a decision on these applicants tonight.
Okay, all right. So why don't we bring the three applicants back in?
Give me a minute, Chief.
Sure. Go to the seat. All right, so congratulations to all three of you. The board has reached consensus on offering conditional offers of employment. So I'm going to read a motion here in a second, but you know, Wes wants you to know that we want you to succeed. The residents here want you to succeed and your chief and department leadership will want you to be successful. So welcome, welcome to Hingham and I hope you have tremendous success. I remember the night my brother was hired by the Hingham Police Department, which was 28 years ago, 28 years ago. It was one of the most proudest moments of his life and my dad's life and my life, so I hope that you have the great same experience that he had and that the other officers at Hingham do as well. So with that, I'm going to read a motion to the record and we'll see if anybody seconds it. So I would make a motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Daniel Martini and Dylan Dursh as permanent police officers for the town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to the following. A, successful passing of the required medical examination, successful passing of the required physical abilities test to PAT, successful passing of the required psychological screening process, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to repayment of the cost of any initially issued police equipment if the appointed officer ceases employment with the town of Hingham Police Department within the first five years. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. And I would make a second motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Janet Herbert as a permanent police officer for the town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to the following. Successful passing of the required medical examination, successful passing of the required physical abilities test to PAT, successful passing of the required psychological screening process, successful completion of the police academy, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to repayment of the $4,650 recruiting training fee and cost of any initially issued police equipment if the appointed officer ceases employment with the town of Hingham Police Department within the first five years and successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those favored by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. And I just want to note, you know, I've been doing this job six years now and over those six years, we haven't got a lot of lateral transfers. And I do want to point out, I think it's because of the new building has helped. So congratulations and thank you to all the residents who supported that. And our collective bargaining agreement, which the recently approved, the personnel board did a great job negotiating those terms and I think, you know, those are helping. So it's great to have new offices here. Congratulations to all three of you and your families and wish you nothing but success in the future. And if you want to stick around and talk about the Center for Active Living, I think you might want to leave. So thanks, nice to meet you.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
All right, we're set to start the discussion at 6:30, so I can't start before then. We have five minutes, so we're going to stay in a recess for five minutes. This meeting of the, well, meeting of the select board is reconvened. We do have the building committee with us tonight. Beth, do you have a quorum?
Do we have a quorum, Beth?
I see Tom Carey online. Joe Kelly's here.
Yes.
So Vicki steps out, you have a quorum. So I'm going to invite you to convene your meeting of the building committee.
Adopting.
You can adopt the language specified by the select board on remote hearings.
Convene the meeting of the building committee.
Okay, yes. I would like to convene the meeting of the building committee.
Adopting the language presented by the board.
Adopted with the language of the select board for the meeting.
Regarding remote hearings. Got it, okay. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. All right. All right, everybody. Next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Hingham Center for Active Living Building Committee, presentation and discussion regarding the preliminary design of the new Center for Active Living Building. Before we do that, I want to have Tom just introduce our newest member of our team and then if you could introduce the team here as well, Tom.
Great. So thank you everyone who I haven't met. Tom Mayo, Town Administrator. I thank you all for being here. This is great. We don't often get this kind of a turnout for a select board meeting, so this is wonderful. This happens to be Brittany, our new Assistant Town Administrator for Finance, her first meeting. So Brittany, this is every night. This is what happens, the way it works here. Brittany, I can tell. Thank you for coming, Brittany. And then also down the end, we have Susan Murphy, our Special Real Estate Counsel for the town. Chris Wanty is our Town Architect and Dan Pallotta is our Owners Project Manager for this project. And they're the ones that are working on the designing as we go through the process.
All right, so this is what's going to happen tonight. We're going to hear a presentation from the building team, specifically Chris, on where we are with the project, all right? The goals tonight are to do two things. First of all, introduce where we are with the project to the public and then solicit feedback, all right? So a lot of us tonight are going to listen. We want to hear what you like, what you don't like, any concerns you have with the project. Then we're going to synthesize it and we're going to take it back and continue the process moving forward. Before we do that, though, questions from the board and the building committee will be taken. Then I'll open up the public, open up the Zoom, all right?
We're going to see things on the screen?
Maybe we can move it. All right, can you maybe help them move that a little bit so they can see that a little bit? Oh, move your chairs up.
Oh, no, no, don't do that. Oh, gosh, careful.
There you go. How's that, better?
And then it's just going to be in all their ways.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. All right, just put it in the corner over here. Let Art do it.
All right. We got it. All right, thank you, Art.
All right, hold on. Put it in the corner over by dot so that people can address the group later.
That's a good idea. All right, I want to note, want to note something too, having said already, this is a preliminary plan, all right? This is not the final plan, all right? So the plan will change as we go through the process. This is where we are with it, but it's not the final plan. I want to make that clear to everybody, all right? So with that, let me turn it over to Chris. Chris, identify yourself, introduce yourself and take us through where we are with the process.
Thank you. So Chris Wanty with EDM Studio, architect that's been working on the project since the beginning of last year essentially. I'm here representing the design team. I also have my colleagues, Brian Kay from SLR, he's on the Zoom, he's our site planner and engineer, and Doug Gallo with Lifespan Design Studio, he's our Senior Center Design Consultant. So we've been working together, like I said, over the past year plus. And Art, if you want to go to the presentation, I can kind of walk through what we want to talk about today. Perfect. So second slide, please. Just a quick, quick little agenda. So I want to talk about major milestones, stuff we've done in the past, where we are today and where we're going, just a quick overview of the schedule in general. Talk about some developments that we've had over the past few months on the site plan design and then similarly talk about some developments that's happened on the floor plan over the past couple of months. The next slide is just a list of the major milestones. I wanted a chance to go through this just to reorient everybody as to, like I said, where we've been, where we are and where we're going. So in December of '24 last year, our design team completed the feasibility study that was presented at numerous public meetings throughout the winter. In April of '25, the town voted to approve the design funding for the new Center for Active Living at Bear Cove Park. As part of the study, we studied multiple options at Bear Cove, we studied multiple options at Town Hall, and in the end, it was decided to move forward at Bear Cove. In May, our contract was signed and we started schematic design. So what we had been doing previously was just a study. We had just been looking at, you know, high-
This is the rough footprint of a building that we would want for this site. So this was shown on the site plan to prove that, yes, the site could accommodate a senior center with a rough order of magnitude square footage of a little over 28,000 square feet. Go to the next slide, please. So schematic design starts. What are we doing? We're trying to reevaluate and challenge some of the assumptions that were made during the feasibility study. So we're looking hard at the site, we're looking hard at the floor plan, you know, trying to find efficiencies, how do we make this thing actually work using and integrating all the feedback that we heard along the way from the committees, from the public. You can see here on the screen, you know, many different sketches and many different options of how the building might fit on the site and what could work for the parking and the park in general. If you go to the next slide, this is the latest, this was the latest slide that the building committee had seen in terms of where the building lands and how the parking would work. And the next slide, it's just a further development of that that I want to get into a little bit further. So this slide shows further development of the building location, further development of the park, the parking layout and the outdoor spaces. With the next slide highlighting major or the most recent changes from the feasibility study, from what the public had seen recently to what we're looking at now. So the first big change was the building has shifted from the western portion of the parcel that we're developing to the northeastern parcel. That does a bunch of different things. One, it puts the building right over the top of where the old Naval Munitions Building is currently sitting. So if you're looking at the diagram up there, that big red rectangle, that's the rough footprint of the old munitions building. The plan would be to put our building right over the top of it. The idea is to limit, you know, the amount of development as much as possible on the site. So we felt like that was a positive change. It also brings the building closer to the utilities that are going to be coming down, Bear Cove Park Drive. So the idea would be to be reducing costs a little bit, not having to run utilities as far all the way down to the left of the site. We also heard that, you know, the parking, a big sea of parking in the middle of this park is not desirable. So we're looking at ways to, you know, try to separate the parking and incorporate more natural landscape in between the parking areas. The idea is that we're not trying to create the Home Depot experience where you drive up, you drive through, you drive through 300 parking spaces, you get to the front door and you find your parking space. The idea here is that you drive in, there's a little bit of a green corridor as you enter into the site on the bottom right, so you don't really drive through the parking lot until you get up to the building, you do your drop off, and then there's numerous parking spots that you can get to fairly easily from any point in the parking area. The other thing that you'll notice is this green corridor that runs through the site. The concept there is we're trying to create a really luscious green area connecting the gate at Bear Cove entry down on the bottom left to our front door, through our building, into the back part of the site. So really trying to, you know, drag in the natural components of the site and really utilize a lot of the natural beauty of putting this building where it is. We've explored maybe highlighting and developing a scenic walking trail or a fitness trail around the perimeter of the site that connects, could connect the ball field up front at Bear Cove to the gate entry down below and through our site. We've reduced the parking count a little bit to fit the additional green spaces that you're looking at on the screen and we've started to accommodate more accessible walkways at every single parking space and really, you know, focusing on the pedestrian safety of everybody in the parking lot. So the idea is that nobody would have to go from a parking space, walk into the drive aisle to get to the building. Everybody would have access to a sidewalk that you could get from your car directly to a flush sidewalk, no curbs, get to a crosswalk, only cross the driveway, drive aisle once and get to the front of the building. So the design is not only starting to utilize some natural forms, but also focusing on pedestrian safety at the same time. So those are some of the major changes that we've been looking at on the site. If you go to the next slide, same thing with the floor plan, challenging our assumptions from the study, trying to explore all different types of options, all different types of shapes of building. What's the most efficient way to get around the building? How is the building staffed? What's the best way for members to find their way around the building and not make it confusing, make it really easy for wayfinding and whatnot? So looking at a bunch of different options. In the end, working with the building committee, if you go to the next slide, this was the floor plan that was last presented, that was agreed upon unanimously from the building committee, a very simple, very simple floor plan. You walk in at the center of the building, you walk into a reception area that has generous space, there'd be a cafe lounge area right there at the entry, two very simple corridors leading down each wing of the building. So essentially, the reception desk has a visibility of every space in the building. Members walk into the building, they know exactly where they're going, you know, they can go right, they can go left, they can see basically down the whole entire building. Activity spaces spread out around the entire building, plenty of bathrooms, plenty of storage, you know, not walking through every single space, but the idea that, you know, all of the programmatic pieces are still incorporated into this plan. So this is the last plan that the building committee had looked at and this is what you're looking at from the site plan. This is the footprint that you're looking at on the site plan that was previously showed. We were asked recently to take a look at, let me back up a second. This floor plan right here, which was the last one that was looked at and approved by the building committee, was about 28,700 square feet. That's the number that this floor plan landed at. If you go to the next slide, we were asked to take a look at potential reduction options and what would it look like without wholesale removing spaces, you know, big programmatic spaces? What would it look like to try to find some efficiencies in the program and in the floor plan? So we went back to the drawing board, very similar layout, very similar spaces, which I'll get into the differences, but this floor plan that you're looking at is an option that reduces the footprint a little bit. So if you go to the next slide, it shows kind of big picture what the reduction would be. So the previous square footage was roughly 28,700 square feet. The new square footage of the plan that you're looking at here from the proposed reduced floor plan would be a little under 26,000 square feet, so 25,950 square feet. It's an approximate reduction of about 10% from the study and from the previous plan that we showed to the building committee. The next slide, I can go through the major changes and we can flip back if there's any questions, but we've removed some spaces. When I say removed some spaces, I mean we've consolidated spaces and combined programmatic spaces. So for example, we had a maker space in the original program in addition to two other art spaces. The conversation was we could take that maker space, combine it with the dirty or the messy art room, so the second art room, create more storage for that space so we could accommodate the usage, but we could double the messy art, dirty art studio as a maker space as well and combine those programmatic spaces. So we're not losing the program altogether, we're just trying to find efficiency and find where can we combine spaces. Same thing with the office assistant. We had a space identified for an office assistant office that has now been consolidated. That person can now sit, or has been identified to sit in the reception area full time. So that office has been removed. The copy area, we removed the dedicated copy area and relocated into the common corridor. So the function is still there, but the space has been saved trying to find efficiency. Kitchen assistant office, we had two offices dedicated for kitchen staff. We've since consolidated it into one office, so both kitchen staff members would have one singular office. Staff restroom, we had two staff restrooms, we've combined them into one multi, all gender restroom. Outdoor storage, the idea would be, don't build the outdoor storage into the facility. I think we had about 200 square feet. We could provide a shed that might be a little bit more cost effective. So again, trying to find efficiencies. Where we reduced the space a little bit, so this is having the same space, same use of the space, but trying to find efficiency in the actual use of the space in terms of how many people can use the space. So the auditorium went from about 100 people to 80 people, that saved about 500 square feet, a reduction of about 25%. The classroom went from 48 people to 30 people. The exercise studio went from 24 people to 20 people. The volunteer space became more efficient, smaller workstations for the volunteers, same amount of stations, but a smaller use of space. Same thing with the break room. The break room still functions, it's just a little bit more efficient. So these spaces, keeping the same program, just reducing the space a little bit, which means less people can use the space, which means less people can use the programs during the weeks and the months. So just part of the discussion, part of the understanding in terms of what's the trade off? Smaller space, obviously it means less people. And then one other thing that's happened is we've talked about adding a reading room that wasn't shown in the previous plan. So a space that's a quiet lounge that's separated from the rest of the building could have a fireplace, bookshelves, place for people to read, do a puzzle and that sort. So that added about 400 square feet, but with all the pushing and pulling, like I said, we were able to reduce the square footage by about 10,000 square feet, or I'm sorry, 10% of the overall building. And then going to the next slide, we just wanted to list the different activities that are in the spaces. We don't have to go through every single one, but just trying to identify what are the multipurpose spaces that we're showing, what's happening in those spaces? If there's any questions on any of the activities or what's happening in the different rooms, we can certainly go through that, but I just wanted to have that information available for people if they had any questions. So that's a very quick recap of kind of what we've been up to for the past three months. Happy to answer any questions about anything along the way. Doug and myself and Brian are here to help. So I'll pass it back to the board.
All right, Chris, thank you. So I just want to summarize what I heard. So what I heard was the plan as it currently stands is a reduction of about 10% and am I correct, it was 2,750 square feet have been eliminated from the initial design, correct?
Correct.
All right. And what you've removed, I'm going to make sure I got this right, the marker space, the office assistant office, a copy room, kitchen assistant office, a staff restroom and outdoor storage, correct?
Correct.
And overall, that's 10% reduction.
Yep. In addition to the other space reductions where we, you know, took a space like the auditorium and removed 500 square feet. So there's other smaller reductions.
Smaller reductions as well, okay.
To each space. Instead of losing it altogether, it was just reduce the space by a little bit.
Okay, great. All right, with that, let me see if anybody in the select board has questions or comments. Go to the building committee and then we'll take public comments. So Liz, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, thank you for being here. A great presentation. I appreciate all the work that's been done so far. I know you mentioned the reduction in space. You also mentioned there was a reduction in parking spots. What is the final count or what is the current estimated count of parking spots?
So we have approximately 160 parking spaces, which is still a little bit in flux depending on, you know, some decisions that we got to make, but we're sitting at about 160 parking spaces in the current design.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And just to kind of put that into context, we like to, and we have this as part of the feasibility study, we like to have about seven parking spaces per 1,000 square feet. That's just based on tried and true experience. That puts us, you know, in the, closer to the 200 range with the current square footage that we're at. If we reduce to where we're looking at in the roughly 26,000 number, that 160 parking spaces is a lot closer to the seven parking spaces per 1,000 square feet. So just to try to orient us.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I don't know if we want to get into the programmatic piece now. Mostly I want to hear people's feedback, so I'll kind of hold my time, my questions and my time and we'll get some feedback.
All right, let me recognize Julie Straley. Julie?
Hi, thanks, Belle. Sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight. Thanks, Chris, for the great presentation and you and your team and the building committee have been very busy, so thank you all for your efforts. And like Liz said, I'm here tonight to listen to feedback and hear what people have to say about how things look right now and look forward to the process being opportunities for people to participate and give their feedback as we go along the way and to come up with a final design. So that's it for now.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the building committee. I don't know if you want to-
Yeah, I would just want to say really briefly, thank you to everyone for being here. Thank you for the design team and the town leaders and residents. We are so happy to have you here today for this conversation. I think it's going to be meaningful engagement. And I just want to really, really briefly just recognize the history of why we're here. So senior center is nationally developed around 100 years ago. In Hingham, we've had a senior center for 50 years. My personal experience is that I joined the Council on Aging and became the chair back in 2012 and the conversations around the inadequate space were prior to 2012. So for those that aren't familiar with the history of what's been happening here, we have been digging into this and exploring for a long, long time and we feel really confident with the feasibility study we've done with EDM and all of the engagement we have had to this point, that we are very close to creating a center that is going to be a resource for this community. And the reason that the history exists for so long in this country and in this town is because senior centers are recognized as a social determinant of health. They foster health and well-being through programs, through nurse programs, nutrition, but also as a third space where communities come together informally and create social connections. And we are, this was already evolving before the pandemic, but we are coming out of a stretch of time of isolation and growing loneliness. And the Surgeon General has recognized that as having detrimental effects on our health and well-being. So this is also a place where you can see from Chris's presentation, there are formal spaces that are going to be designated for different kinds of programs and- They foster health and well-being through programs, through nurse programs, nutrition, but also as a third space where communities come together informally and create social connections. And we are, this was already evolving before the pandemic, but we are coming out of a stretch of time of isolation and growing loneliness. And the Surgeon General has recognized that as having detrimental effects on our health and well-being. So this is also a place where you can see from Chris's presentation, there are formal spaces that are going to be designated for different kinds of programs and activities, but it's also going to be a place for people to just go and maybe sit quietly and observe other people and feel that energy. And it really does impact our health. The Surgeon General had an advisory where it states that the detrimental effect of isolation on our health is the equivalent of smoking 15 cigarettes a day. Google that. So I just want to say we're really excited to get to this place and we are looking forward to hearing from you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. I'll second that. My name is Stephen Young. I'm on the been on the building committee for a few years. And I wanted to touch also on the history of how we got here tonight of the design. In addition to Chris, Doug Gala with Lifespans Studios and Brian on the landscape slash side of it. Doug is Doug is out of state and he is a he is what I would refer to as a senior center expert. He Doug and his team, Doug is a consultant to various architects nationally and and Chris and his firm at EDM, that was a that was a very thorough process of the of the interview of their team. And and we felt they're the best fit for Hingham and and that's ultimately what got got voted upon. But but I there are there are building codes and then there are efficiencies and then there are the the ideal room size for whatever activities happen there. So our limited expertise on this board, you know, it wasn't our job to create the program. We were looking for guidance and we looked to our team of experts for that. So the 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 program is based on Hingham's growing elder population. That was that's very important, the health that that Beth just mentioned, the mental health in particular. But in addition to that, this is this wasn't a just a rename and a rebrand. The 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 name was a very conscious decision by the town, frankly. The Center for Active Living is will be a multi-generational center. So don't think this is for 60 plus or what have you. This is a tremendous asset for the town, which the program has been scrutinized up and down. It has enough parking and and it's safe and it's and it's in a location that hopefully will serve us for decades to come. So we're not just following, we're not just following other towns. This is Jennifer Young's here tonight who runs the the existing center and they've been working out of, you know, a shoebox basically here for quite a while. And this is, we're I'm also really excited to be here tonight and and to hear the public's questions, especially regarding anything with programming and so on and so forth.
Thank you. I'm Vicky Donlin. I've been on the building committee since it was formed several years ago. And I'm also on the Recreation Commission and was on the Advisory Committee back in 2000. So this is a long time coming for seniors. But I want to address one of what we might call the elephant in the room, because many people in this community believed that we were going to have a senior center here at Town Hall. And it's very important for everyone to understand it was addressed, it was looked at. We did everything we could to see, is it possible? But I ask you, is there enough parking at Town Hall? I don't know about you tonight, but I got here early and I still needed to park on the street. That happens many times. Seniors need to be able to get to the building. This was the perfect location and something that just is so perfect for seniors. I also know many seniors and every senior I know continues to drive well into their 90s. We need a place where people can drive and be safe and get there and enjoy all there is to being someone who is becoming a senior, which today can be anything from 60 over. And this community has a lot. But I think it's important for people to understand, we did not come to this decision lightly. Town Hall just was not able to be an appropriate senior center, Center for Active Living. Bear Cove is that place, and I hope that people understand that and as they've gone through this process, see that the building committee did everything we could to come to the right decision and make and create an opportunity for seniors to enjoy years to come in a place that they can recreate both inside and outside. Thank you.
My name is Joe Kelly. I am probably on this committee for about two weeks, I think, at this point, maybe not quite. I'm coming over from the 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 Hingham Public Safety Building Committee. We worked on the project up there on Route 3A for the police and fire station. So I'm looking forward to working with the building committee here in the town to really get the the correct level of of services to the community that as a whole, to the town of Hingham as a whole. I mean, we have, as you've heard and everybody is in agreement, that we have an aging population. Commonwealth calls this part of the state a gray district nowadays. So, you know, how do we how do we address these things as we move forward? How do we have appropriate programming to benefit the, you know, the social and emotional and mental health of our aging community? We hear a lot about children and the social, emotional welfare, and I think that that's an issue that affects seniors as well. And I'm looking forward to working with the committee and the the professional team that works on programming and make sure that when we have this facility laid out, that the community's needs are met. But we're going to have the adequate amount of space for programming as well. And, you know, I guess that's kind of all I have for that.
Thank you. Are there any members of the building committee on Zoom that wish to make a comment or question at this time? I've not seen any hand raised hand. So, all right, we'll go to public comment. Before I do that, I want to note that the select board did adopt rules or guidelines for public comment for agenda items, and they are as follows. Speakers are asked to state their names and address before speaking. Will be afforded two minutes for any comments or concerns. Time may be extended at the discretion of the chair. While the board recognizes that it cannot regulate the content of remarks, the chair requests that residents do not engage in personalities, and these are guidelines similar to what we use at town meeting. So with that, we're going to take some comment in the room and then we'll go to Zoom and try to get everybody in. So I see hand up. Ma'am, right there, go ahead. Sorry.
Do you want to move that podium back?
Yeah, well, if we could, if you don't mind. Thank you. Just that's kind of a tough angle right there. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome to the committee.
Thank you. All right, if you could just, that's very nice. Thank you for that. Thank you. If you could just state your name and address and go ahead.
Hi, Joanne Heilman, 319 Lincoln Street, Apartment 308. I am also a member of the Hingham Climate Action Commission. And so my first comment is just as representing that commission, we want to let the building committee know that we hope to work with you as you go through this process. Every indication that anybody has had speaking with the architect or with any of you has certainly led us to believe that you are working towards as zero and emission building as possible. So it's not that we're like worried about it, but we want to be helpful and we want to stay on top of it. So that's comment number one. Comment number two, however, is from me personally, not representing any committee that I happen to be on or other group that I may be associated with. I would like to first confess that I got out of the loop over the past year and did not stay in touch with the deliberations that were going on that led you to believe that the that using the space in this building was not a feasible way to go. So when I last left this thinking about this at all, it had to do with voting yes for the public safety building and assuming that this that that led some let some space be available to help for this the Center for Active Living. That said, I recognize that you've done due diligence, that you have worked very hard, and I'm not trying to persuade you that you did the wrong thing. But I am left with wondering what exactly is going to be happening to that space and just commend to the select board that they have something, you know, a responsibility to find ways that will save money for the town and do good things for our carbon footprint in finding new uses for that space. I do have some questions, though, about the 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 figures and facts that you used in deciding what, you know, what amount of space you needed. I I was very pleased to see the open letter from Mary Power suggesting that it was going to be really important for you all to consider reducing the space. I'm glad to see that you're starting in that direction. I don't know if it's gone far enough to to please some of us, but it at least you're thinking that way. But one of the things that I started looking at was, well, you know, people mentioned the Situate Center, and that's a significantly smaller town with a smaller population of older people. Marshfield recently increased their the size of their senior center. Their population is a little bit closer to ours. But when you look at the what comes up if you Google how many seniors live in Hingham, you get a surprisingly large number. And the reason for that is Linden Ponds. And I just hope that you are recognizing that the people who live in Linden Ponds have so many options for activities that it is highly unlikely they're going to be rushing off to to no matter how beautiful the building is, there anything they want to do, all they have to do is say, I want to do it, and it becomes a thing in their in their community. So just just to make sure that you are thinking carefully about what are the numbers and what are the reasons for significant growth in the senior population in Hingham as you go forward in in your planning. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment questions. I'm going to have Tom address the question about what we're going to do with this extra space. Go ahead.
Thank you for the question. So, yeah, when we moved the police department out of that space, we had already begun in our still working with the state to create to obtain a grant that will allow the 911 Center, the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center, SREC, to to move from their space right now that's constraining their growth as a regional entity, move them down to the downstairs part of that police station. The state grant would pay for the entirety of the move and the retrofit, so we're hoping to be able to do that in the next year or so. As that happens, that frees up that space that they're in, that we would be able to move our office growth into from the town perspective into their existing space. But then we're also, the school department is likely to be able to move into the the officer space of the police department, the second floor, which is much smaller, several offices in a small space. And then as if the senior center were to move to Bear Cove, we are in communications with all of our existing departments, including the school department, on potential growth into that space.
And those are not finalized, but Tom, we've asked Tom to think about it, come up with a plan, so he's still doing that. Mr. Nevin, go ahead.
My name is Joe Nevins, and I live at 46 Lincoln Street, and I'm also the Chair of the current Council on Aging. And I just wanted to say a few things. There are a few elephants in the room. Vicky mentions one, the siding. The second, probably the programmatic nature and all of the programs that we have and hope to have over the next year. And the third is the cost of such a building. And what I want you to know is that this is a democracy. People are going to have to vote at the annual meeting and they will vote again after that. As members of the Council on Aging, we are keenly aware of costs. We are keenly aware that many of the potential users of this facility have lived in the town for a long time. They have stayed in the town, paid their taxes long after their children have graduated from school. They have stayed because they want to. So this is going to be a community effort. We realize as Council on Aging members that we have a large job to do over the next year. And that job is convince the town that this is the right facility and it is worth spending the money for our community members. We only ask that you listen to what we have to say. You'll probably be hearing from a number of us over the course of the year in various communities, various groups. We want to tell you, if we convince you, great. But all we ask right now is that you keep an open mind and you listen, and we hope that we get your affirmative vote. But mostly, we want you to listen and participate in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anita.
I would like to ask in advance if I could have longer than two minutes.
I'll give you some extra time.
Okay. I appreciate that. My name is Anita Ryan, and I live at 37 Baker Hill Drive in Hingham. And what a vibrant center that was. And we want a beautiful, vibrant senior center for our town. But what's being proposed isn't right for our town or our community. There are so many towns that have been focused on adaptive reuse, and that's a fancy real estate term. Take something existing and repurpose it. So many other towns have done it. Why can't we? There's no repurposing of any existing capital resources with this proposal. That impacts cost. I would also ask you to be transparent as you do this. All the costs associated with this senior center needs to be part of the proposal. If you're bringing utilities into conservation land where none are needed, that needs to be added to the cost. No one is asking for an improvement to the park by bringing sewer, water, electricity. The only improvement we're asking for this park is to please leave it alone and give the trees and the wildlife space to grow and live. We haven't had sewer or water in that park for 50 years. It's not needed, nor it's wanted. No one's complaining about Bear Cove Park Drive being repaved. The town is also embarking on a capital review right now. We just finished two major capital projects, and we're trying to squeeze in this third one before we have a really good handle over our capital needs over the next five years. The senior center needs to be part of whatever capital plan we develop. We need the information to citizens and voters. Now, you may say, we've been working at this for years. We want a senior center right now, and I get that. Sadly, things change. We saw that. Had we stuck to the plan of using Town Hall once the police left, I wouldn't be standing here before you. But I am. I fear that we rush and we do a standalone center now, only find out we've got all these major renovations and buildings, whether it's Town Hall, the Country Club, Plymouth River Schools, South School, all will require major work, and we can't really make an informed decision on appropriateness of a standalone multimillion dollar facility without better understanding our capital needs. There are also no synergies with this proposal. Another set of bathrooms, another set of windows, roof, et cetera. Most importantly, I'm going to talk about the environment. Bear Cove Park, it's a treasure for our community. It's a home that balances the stresses of urban life. It's a carbon absorption superpower, and it provides a home for wildlife. You may say, oh, it's only five acres. You're only losing five acres. But wait a second. There is no other conservation land in Hingham that is a beloved park that has been deeded for open space enjoyment for the public, that is a wildlife sanctuary, that is an area of critical environmental concern, all three. There's no other conservation land in our town that has those three qualities together. The site in Bear Cove Park is in Bear Cove Park. The residents, when they're voting at this recent Town Hall meeting, I don't believe that they were aware of the environmental significance of this entire park. There was no mention in the warrant of this site being in Bear Cove Park. There was no mention in the warrant of this site being an area of critical environmental concern. There was no mention in the warrant of this site being on a wildlife sanctuary. All these failures tell me something, that there's a problem with this site. Because this site is so special, it has to go through lots of hurdles that is going to throw a complete monkey wrench to any timing. There's Article 97. And as I've been telling this board, the law has changed since 2022, and what the town is trying to do with the land swap isn't going to work. There are also two wetland orders of restrictions overseen by the DCR that covers this property. That's another hurdle. Then you've got the AC AC review. That's another hurdle. You also have to get reviewed by Coastal Zone Management because this land is part of the coast. The most important one, though, I want to talk about is is this, what I'm showing you right now. This is the plan that Hingham had to record as part of getting this land. And this was the agreement we had to make, not only to the US government, but to the public. public, that all this land, and I'm gonna hold up something else and tell me if you notice anything, that all this land is open space recreation. Open space recreation for the public to enjoy in perpetuity. We are all prepared to go all the way to protect this land as open space conservation land, just as it was intended and just as Hingham promised. We've heard you loud and clear that we want to do right for our seniors, but that doesn't mean it's right to take conservation land away from our public and community. What does this mean now, you may suggest? I want us to enjoy our senior center. We've made a little bit of room. We've just paid $55 million for, to get you a little bit more room. Let's use it now. Let's work together on finding a better long-term solution for a senior center for Hingham. I have lots of ideas, and I'm happy to help. The current proposal isn't right for our town. The current proposal isn't right for our community. The proposal isn't right for the public, who get to enjoy passive use of this land in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGurran, did you wanna? No? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, did you wanna? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Susan. Identify yourself on the record.
Susan, thank you. Susan Murphy, Town Special Real Estate Council. So I just wanna walk through those comments that were made. They were made at town meeting. I responded to them at town meeting. Some members of the community, including Ms. Ryan, has been provided with significant documentation, and I want to provide clarifications to a number of the statements that were made. So, to start with, the town did acquire the property from the federal government in 1972 under the Federal Lands to Park Program. The deed is for open space and public recreation. Not public open space, open space and public recreation. The town has been the steward of this property since 1972, so, what's that, over 50 years? Particularly in the last 10 to 15 years, and I'd say probably a little over 10, 10 years or so, because it started becoming, the relationship between the town and the National Park Service, who oversees the management of this property, has gotten extremely close over the 10 years. It was a concerted effort by a prior town administrator, Ted Alexiottis, where he and I met in Boston with the National Park Service Regional Office multiple times and spoke to them. Every time, anything changes for use in that land, it's a federal lands to park called the LFP lands, there was a discussion with the National Park Service. Bringing the high schoolers into Row was a conversation. Every time there's a discussion about putting a, you know, new shed over by the ball, baseball field, anytime the town is looking to modify the uses in any way, not only does it, you know, voluntarily go to the National Park Service on this, but the town is required to do stewardship reports on a regular basis. So since I've been here in this role, the town has done these stewardship reports, including what's called Programs of Utilization, twice in the last 10 years. And at the time that Ted Alexiottis and I were working with the National Park Service and refining the stewardship reports and Programs of Utilization, the National Park Service specifically requested, please, please, when you are providing these reports to us, separate the open space, which is determined to be Bear Cove Park, as we refer to it, the park proper, which is between the gates. The gate at the end of Bear Cove Park Drive and Shet, Shelter Path, which you get to from the, from the Beale Street side. That is what the National Park Service, who oversees this land and the town's use of it, determines to be the open space. Because the, the land was left to the town, or conveyed to the town, with a lot of dilapidated and contaminated buildings, and because athletic fields had been put on either side, right? So on the Beale Street side, the park is kinda between the fields and other buildings, existing buildings that are still there. That is how the National Park Service requested that the town divide the land into the open space and the public recreation. So the public recreation includes all the ball fields that everyone's familiar with, but it also includes the Bear Cove Fire Museum. It includes the, the model train, for example. These are, these, that is not, that no one would call the Fire Museum open space, but yet it is recognized by the National Park Service, under the town's Program of Utilization and existing concession agreements, as public recreation. You don't have to be running around in a field, according to National Park Service, for them to consider recreation. And when myself and Mr. Mayo, and Mr. Coughlin, who is the town's general town council, and I believe it was the chair, Mr. Fisher at the time, met on a Zoom meeting with the National Park Service in the fall, they were said, we have senior centers at many of our properties, either that we own outright or that we oversee, and that we want, we want to encourage the interaction of this aging population in these public natural areas that we oversee. The town was, had, that conversation was a precipitous for the town to even consider Bear Cove Park Drive, was with that both encouragement by the National Park Service and recognition that this is a use that they would believe is appropriate. Now, that had an asterisk. The asterisk was, you have to go through the, you know, a process, a National Environmental Protection Act process, in which the town spent a few months working with both all the town staff, conservation agent, town engineer, the town planner, outside wetland scientists, and, and the development team, to fill out a very lengthy, detailed environmental questionnaire. And when, coming out of that process, there were, there were two potential results. One would be that the National Park Service would say, oh, we think that these are serious impacts, you need to go through an envi, in full federal environmental review that will take a few years to review, or they could grant the town what's called a categorical exclusion, that based on what the town was proposing, and the environmental, and it included wildlife, it included, you know, impact on potential, if there were wetlands, which are not being affected by this project, et cetera, they reviewed all of that. The, the conservation agent went through the whole process with the federal fisheries and wildlife to determine whether or not there were any threatened or endangered species. There aren't. And at the end of that, the National Park Service issued to the town a categorical exclusion, stating that there would not be significant impact on the environment by this project going forward. So, that's the first thing. This location is not conservation land. The project, as designed by the project team, will not, is not within any Hingham Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. It's not even in a buffer zone to a wetland or a vernal. It was intentional, and the design team will tell you, that myself, the conservation agent, the town engineer, the town planner, said to them, you know, you gotta show us where this rectangle is going? He's laughing. And you cannot touch any of these important resources of the town. And, and a long time was spent with the design team to make sure that conservation land would not be affected by this project. It's also, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I just, there was so much said that was not accurate. So I, I note that of the five acres, approximately an acre already has an existing building, which is contaminated, needs to be removed. And there's also, there is an area of critical environmental concern, but the state has said that, and it's right from their website, I printed it out to bring it with me, what an AC does not do is it does not prohibit or, or impact the, the ability to develop the land. And in fact, the Back River condominiums are with, were constructed within the AC. So that is not a prohibition on, on development. And the last one is the wildlife sanctuary. This area, no portion of the town-owned land is a wildlife sanctuary. It's, it never has been. There was a desire in 1985 for the town to look into whether that would be possible. It didn't happen, and the reason is, under state law, town-owned land can never become a wildlife sanctuary. I reviewed this in detail with the state in 2017. I have an email from the State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife that said, none of this land is a wildlife sanctuary. That information has been previously provided to another member of the public who requested it. So, I just wanted to state also with respect to the permitting, that a number of the permitting items that were listed is not accurate, and will, those, those permitting requirements do not apply to this project. So I apologize for going on so long, but there, there are so many statements that were made that were not accurate, that I, when, in the interest of transparency and the public understanding the level of detail and the months of work that was done, both legally and by the staff of this town, to make sure that this was appropriate site, that it was important for the record to state that all. So I apologize for taking so much time.
Okay, no, thank you so, thank you so much. Mary Power. And what I'm gonna do is, somebody's been waiting on Zoom, so after Mary speaks, I'm gonna go to Zoom real quick, and I'll come back to the room.
Hi, Mary Power. One King Philip path that's gonna bump. Okay. Sorry about that. I'm making these comments as a citizen who wants this project to succeed. And I wanna make that really clear. You know, I think the question that we have right now, I'm sitting back there with my friend Amy Farrell, who always used to say, count your votes, baby. And so to me, the question is, we have this beautiful design for a beautiful facility, and the question is, if we take this to town meeting, will we get two-thirds at town meeting, and will we get a majority at the ballot box? And that's a really hard question, right? What is, what is that right balance? There was a lot of discussion about town meeting, about the, the size of the facility. Is 28,000 square feet too much, too little? It was confusing. It was confusing. I don't know the answer. But I also think telling the public at this point that we think we know the answer, because we've worked on it so hard, runs the risk that people will say, you know what, I disagree, and, and I'm out. I think there's another consideration here, which is the finances, and I know we're getting into that, and welcome to Brittany. If you think about it, our property taxes have gone up by over 20% in the last couple years with important projects we all, that we all authorized. In the next few years, we still have to pay for some of those projects. So if we do nothing else, our taxes are gonna go up by about another 13% in the next four years. If we layer on $150 million of debt, which was what was talked about in the warrant, including this project and others, that's a 10% more of an increase in our taxes. And then we know that there's the possibility of an override coming in two years. For argument's sake, $5 million is 5%. So when you add up all those numbers, you're gonna have people walking into town meeting, having had their taxes gone up by, you know, over 20% in the last four years, and looking at the potential for another, by my math, maybe 28, 30%. And, you know, I think the question, and the thing that's so hard for, for all of us in this position is, at what point do people say, as much as I love all these projects, I just can't do that? And, and I worry that we, we hit a ceiling at some point, and the consequences are tough. Now, I, I know there's gonna be grant funding, there's gonna be other things, but we also, I think, all need to be realistic, that the bulk of this will fall on the backs of the taxpayers. And I'd make another point, which is, at next year's town meeting, when this is coming forward, it is likely that the operating budget being proposed is gonna have some pretty deep cuts in it, because of the memorandum of understanding. So, I just want us to think about the juxtaposition in that town meeting. We walk into town meeting, there's an operating budget where school and municipal services might get cut, and then we're gonna ask for a tax increase for the Center for Active Living. That is a bit of a timing conundrum, and in, in my view, if, if we as a town can show that we have demonstrated fiscal restraint and discipline in putting together this great project, I think it raises the odds of success. I actually think that it's more the gesture than the dollars. You know, I mean, a 10% reduction in the footprint, I, I don't know, over 30 years, that's probably not gonna have a big impact on your tax bill, but I think the gesture is really, really important. I think that helps with the public safety facility. I, I just say one other thing as we go forward with process, because I'm not sure whether this is the only meeting where there's input into design, or there are other meetings. You know, when, when we brought the water company forward, we had had seven years of, of meetings, work, I mean, tens of thousands of hours by, you know, John Asher alone, and then there was everybody else. And, you know, when we brought it forward, we had so much pride in what we were doing. We had a strong sense of ownership, and we had really done our homework. We're really proud that we did our homework. So when members of the advisory committee and members of the public started asking us questions, you know, I gotta admit, the first time that happened, I got a little defensive. I'm like, what are you doing, asking me this question? I've been studying this for seven years. I got the answer. And I think what I had to do is remember that the public had the right, and the advisory committee had the responsibility to ask questions, challenge assumptions, and offer different perspectives. And what I think we found during that process was that when we took the time to engage in those conversations, to challenge the assumptions, we made some modifications to our proposal that made it better. And those modifications also brought more people along. As I'm listening to the conversation tonight, I'm struggling to see when and where that's gonna happen, and that just gives me a little bit of pause. Not because I don't have confidence in all the fine work that's been done, but because I know that in this open meeting form of town government, that's what our citizens expect. So as we go forward, I, I really do hope that there's continued public engagement, there remains civil discourse and transparency. And I just make one other observation, which is, as, as we're, as we're challenging one another with all this, let's not necessarily view it as opposition. Let's view it as, we all have a really, a shared goal, and let's work together to make that happen, and let's appreciate that, while we may have different methods in mind, that, that we do have the shared goal of addressing a long overdue need. So, anyway, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go to the person on Zoom, been waiting a while, then I'll come back to the room. So if you could, is it Hillary? I can't see your last name, sorry, Hillary. Why don't you go next?
Thank you. I'm Hillary Hosmer. I would love to see a copy of the plan with the Bear Cove Park between the gates. I'm having trouble with the gate being at the lower left-hand corner. When I first saw the plans, it looked like a lot of trees were being cut down and being replaced by grass. And as you know, wildlife, birds, squirrels, chipmunks, live in trees. You reduce, when you change it from three dimensions to two dimensions, you cut out a lot of living space for wildlife. So do you have that juxtaposition?
Do you want, you wanna see the plan?
Yes, but in, in the context of Bear, the rest of Bear Cove Park behind the gate.
We don't, I don't think we have that yet. We, I'm sorry, we don't actually have that, that, what you're asking for yet.
Okay, 'cause I couldn't tell.
But we'll work on it.
I was surprised at the lawyer's comment that town-owned land can never be a wildlife sanctuary. I'm one of those people who loves Bear Cove Park and sees lots of wildlife. I've photographed cormorants and seagulls fighting over fish. It's, it's a critical endangered area. We can't go to see wildlife at World's End. There just aren't that mu, there isn't that much, but there certainly is. In one day, I've seen eagles and osprey and cormorants, seagulls. In one day, I've seen eagles and osprey and cormorants, seagulls, and greater egrets at Bear Cove Park. So isn't that all town-owned land?
Yeah, so.
We'll answer that for you.
Thank you, this is Susan Murphy. So the wildlife sanctuary designation is something that is, by statute, is designating an area. Obviously, much of wooded land, no matter where it is, in Hingham or anywhere in the world, wildlife lives there. But the legal designation as a wildlife sanctuary under the statutes of Massachusetts can only apply to state-owned land. And I'd note that the town acquired in 1972 over 400 acres, over 115 or so of it was water, so it's part of the river. But next door to this, five acres, one of which is already disturbed by a building, is about 250 acres of the Bear Cove Park between it. So I just wanted to note that if it was only a five-acre park, and you were taking down the trees in four acres, that's a significant impact, but all of the environmental review has determined that this area, which is outside the park proper, compared to the 200-plus next to it, is not a significant impact.
Thank you. All right, let me go to Judy Sneath. Go ahead, Judy. Name an address, please.
Lower my hand. Hi, my name is Judy Sneath. I live at 89 North Street. I am a senior. According to tonight's conversation, I've been a senior for quite some time. When this new Center for Active Living building was first contemplated, apparently, I was the parent of students at Foster School. I was on the planning board when we permitted the Country Club pool project. I'm a trustee of the library. I shepherded the 3A roadway improvement project that will result in new public amenities. We are blessed to live in a town with all kinds of resources that we all support. And so I'm echoing a little bit of Mary Power and saying that each of us taxpayers are vested in all of our projects. They benefit all of us. And so I urge us, as we move forward, to move forward together and not as being opposed to the senior center because we got the schools. We all got the schools. I didn't. My kids are at the old Foster School, but we all get this. These are resources for our whole town. They benefit all of us. At the same time, we all assume the responsibility and the burden of their building costs and the associated capital costs and operating costs. So if I, as a senior, can go to the public library, do I also need a reading room in Bear Cove Park? If I, as a senior, can go to lunch at the Country Club, do I also need to have lunch in Bear Cove Park? If I can go to the movies at the shipyard, maybe I don't also need a theater in Bear Cove Park? So I urge you to think about our seniors as taxpayers, living on fixed incomes. I don't know many 94-year-olds who are driving, so I also urge you to think about seniors who can't get in their car and drive to Bear Cove Park or to the library or to the Country Club, but think about the seniors who are homebound and what kind of programming we can do for them in their neighborhoods with their neighbors. And maybe that doesn't require a separate building. So I know you have worked on this for a long time. I know what projects like this take. I've been working on the 3A project for eight years. But I also know that we need creative thinking, we need flexibility, and we need to preserve whatever capital we can preserve because of the 100-plus million dollars in capital expenses that we all need to assume. So I don't know, again, I am a little bit skeptical about whether any of us can affect this project at this point, and that is terribly troubling. The capital plan that the town is coming up with is happening after this process seems to be chugging along, and so I'm kind of discouraged, but I do urge you to think about all of us as taxpayers and maybe as seniors who don't all drive. Thank you.
Judy, thank you. I'm gonna go to Mark, and I'll come back to the room. Mark, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. My name is Mark Rockoff, and I live at 36 Pleasant Street. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My wife and I have lived in Hingham for more than 40 years, and we've been very strong supporters of projects that have helped make this town such a wonderful place. However, we are still very concerned about their current plans for the Center for Active Living, even though we are senior citizens ourselves now. Basically, it seems to be way more than is necessary, and if the town continues down this path, it may actually wind up hurting more seniors than it helps. And the reason for this has already been nicely expressed by Mary Power tonight and in her letter to the Hingham anchor. It will just cost too much, and therefore, it's gonna impose an even greater tax burden on homeowners than already exists. And many of the town seniors currently struggle to deal with taxes, in large part due to the increased assessed value of their homes, especially if they bought them many years ago when assessed values were much less. Plus, the recent override to pay for the new school and public safety building has already made things much more difficult for some of the old-timers who are retired and on a fixed income. We already know of individuals who have lived in Hingham either all of their lives or most of their lives, who've already been forced to move out of town because they can't afford the cost of the increased tax burden that their houses require of them. And current town efforts to provide financial relief to some seniors, based on the value of their home and their income level, are simply way too inadequate, as they are, to prevent people from being forced out of town. Therefore, we strongly urge the Select Board and the Planning Committee to rein in this project before it gets finalized, unless you can find a way to pay for it without yet another tax increase. Seniors here certainly deserve an improved senior center, but we do not need a massive, new, expensive building, when more modest and less costly improvements would be just fine and still welcomed by the seniors in town. As Judy just said, we have such wonderful resources now where we can read quietly in the library or go to places in town that are available for activities. We really need to consider this again. So I urge you to reconsider the entire scope of this current proposal before we harm unintentionally many of the seniors in town. Thank you very much.
Mark, thank you. I'm gonna go to Glenn Mangurian. Joe Kelly, could you bring the mic over to Glenn, if you don't mind? Oh, thank you, Nina, thank you.
Can he hear me all right?
Sound great, Glenn, go ahead.
Good. Glenn Mangurian for Huckleberry Hill. I'm a resident of 41 years in town, and my comments are gonna build on Mary's comments with a slightly different twist. Mary wrote a very thoughtful and pragmatic article for the anchor, and it really prompted my thinking about this project. And she said in the article, and she said tonight, that she supports a new senior center. And she also wrote that rejecting a proposed new senior center would send a very negative reverberation through the town, as well as other communities that would see what we did. I hope I'm paraphrasing what you said reasonably well. So her main point is a risk management point, and that is, there's a risk that we won't get two-thirds, and if we get two-thirds, we might lose at the ballot. So there's two chances of losing, and when you lose, you get 5,000 square feet. That's what you have. And she thinks that that, she and I, think that that is a losing proposition. So the question is, is this facility too big? And what is the right size? What is the right size for a new facility that will garner two-thirds vote and 50% plus votes at the ballot box? Now, I don't know what that is. I don't know what that is. And I haven't heard any proposal of what the scale of the size of the new building would be to accomplish that. So those that think that it's too big need to think about what the scale would be for you to say yes. If you think it's too big, what size should it be for you to say yes? Now, I'm not quite done yet. There's a general rule that Tom Mayo says, for every $10 million of borrowing, it's $100 a property tax increase. That's a general rule of thumb. It's not precise, but it's a general rule of thumb. By the way, I checked from the East School to the, when was the last override, in the 2020s? My taxes were flat. My taxes were flat for 12 years. Yes, they've jumped up recently, but I went through a period of time. Now, either I was paying much too much in taxes, and I'm not saying you should go back and check your taxes. I'm only telling you what my experience was, 'cause I went and checked my tax bills going back that far. So yes, we're making up for, I'm making up for lost time. And I've lived in the town long enough to remember when we voted 7.5 million to take the Country Club. That was a pretty good deal back then, but boy, was it controversial at the town meeting. It was very controversial. And all things, when it involves taxes, are always controversial. So there's a correlation, there's a belief, there's a correlation between size of building and project cost. But it's not linear. There's not a linear correlation, because I used to do this for a living 30 years ago, so I might be a little rusty, but when you look at something like this, you have to consider the fixed costs and the variable costs. And there are a lot of fixed costs associated with this building. There's site prep, there's legal. You delineated in the February presentation that showed the costs, a lot of fixed costs. You're not gonna reduce those fixed, they're hard to reduce fixed costs. Much easier to reduce variable costs. So we got a facility, by the way, the construction cost of that facility is 19.4 million? Is that it? 19.4 for the 28,000 square foot. That will equate the total project cost. Total project cost will raise the average tax bill $350. But you're not gonna change the fixed cost. You're gonna address the variable cost, and if you reduce the footprint of the building, as you did the 10%, you know how much that will affect the tax bill? It will affect it $19 a year for the average taxpayer. $19 a year. Not $1,900, it's $19 a year. So the question is, how much do you want to reduce it, given that the nugget is $350? Because you can't, you're not, you can't just say, "We'll take 50% off and reduce that 50%." It doesn't work that way. So if you go back to the question, what's the right size that will get the two-thirds and the 50%, you gotta answer that for yourself, recognizing that it's $19 for the average tax bill for 10% reduction. So the Select Board and the Advisory Committee need to evaluate these trade-offs. How much money are we actually saving on our tax bill by reducing the size of the building? Because that's the argument that's being put forth. And I'm with Mary. I'm worried about the two-thirds and the 50-plus percent. And so that's basically what I have to say.
Thank you. Josh Ross, and then I'll go to you, sir.
Joshua Ross, 125 Wampatuck Road. Because it was addressed, I'm gonna put on my Board of Assessors hat for two seconds and say, yes, there are tax relief programs, and currently, 25% of those people who are eligible apply. So if you are listening to this and you're in this room, we encourage you, or know people who would qualify for this, to please take advantage. The due date is September 2nd. You can go down to the Board of Assessors office and get all the information there. But one of the things that we want to do is make sure all the folks who qualify for our tax relief programs are taking advantage of it, and right now, it's only about 25% of those who would qualify. And each year, the limitations do go up, and so right now, I believe it's 1.025 million for assessed house values, which covers a lot of houses in Hingham. That's my Board of Assessors spiel for a second. So I think one of the things that we have to look at is that we have done a lot of projects in town, and we can take a lot from it. We were told, when Foster was being built, that we should wait and wait for SBA money, and that we should wait and take our time and do it right, and that if we didn't get it the first time, we should wait and do it again. And we didn't get it the second time, we should wait and do it again, because it's important to get the SBA money. Well, we waited and waited five years, and we finally got the money. And in the end, it's gonna cost taxpayers $30 million more than if we just did it the first time by ourselves. And so the total cost of the Foster building, which I spent most of my last 10 years fighting for, came in at somewhere around 100, and someone's gonna tell them, $113 million, when SBA roughly pays for about a third of it. And so we're on the hook for about $90 million. We could've gotten the building done for 60. So we always like to say, we want to wait and plan and plan, and doing this for 13 years is not long enough. Let's wait some more time. We should learn the lessons of very recent buildings of us waiting and taking our time to do this when costs are skyrocketing. I also want to say, as part of the Council on Aging, for the last year or so, maybe year and a half, members on the council and our brand ambassadors have been out in the public every week, talking to members of the community about this project. We've been at farmers' markets, we've had tables at the Arts Walk, we've been to Linden Ponds, we've been to neighborhood community meetings. We have a list of events and plans that we are gonna do over the next 10 months that will rival what we did for the Water Company. And I was part of that, too, and there were a ton of meetings, and I can promise you that we are getting out and engaging with the community. And I can tell you that with the talks that we've had so far, they've been mostly positive. Again, that's anecdotal, and everyone talks to a different group of people, but that's the feedback that we have gotten from being out in the public so far. Two things. This has been described as the Taj Mahal of senior centers, and the best of the best This has been described as the Taj Mahal of senior centers and the best of the best that we could possibly build, and it's enormous. If you look online at some of the features that are in some senior centers, you would think we would have lap pools and indoor tracks and woodwork shops and a full theater and a beauty salon and a medical center, and you name it. And I'm sure Doug and his team can tell you all these other things that are in modern centers that we just, we don't have. This isn't, this building isn't going to be a luxury, it's going to be a necessity. And so I think, lastly, one of the things that we have to do on the council that we haven't done yet is really explain what the center is going to do for the community. From the second they walk in the door to the second they go home at night, there needs to be programming to keep folks active. And so I think a little bit started tonight, and Chris put up all the activities that were, we're going to be in each room. Going forward, we're going to put out schedules and really show the public that every space of this building is going to be utilized, and that we really have thought and listened to the experts on what is best for the senior members of our community. Law states to get funding that it has to be a 60-plus older focused building, but it will be accessible to everyone in town. And so that's the way we should look at it. And I am extremely proud to have worked on this already and look forward to the next 10 months.
Thank you, Josh. Sir, up front.
Thank you. I'm not here to talk about the senior center or finances. I don't know.
Name and address, name and address.
My name is Brian Supala. I live at 46 Seaver Road in Waymouth, about 10 minutes from Bear Cove.
Thank you.
And I don't know about the finances or the intricacy of the senior center. I'm not against that. I'm here to speak for Bear Cove Park and preserving it the way it is and the way I've enjoyed it for the last 20 years. And many people I know enjoy it in the way that it's for passive recreational activities, as I understand it, such as walking. I see parents pushing baby strollers, joggers, biking, hiking, people of all ages, not just young people. I see seniors walk there all the time. It's a social gathering place. Like I said, I've been going there about 20 years, every morning since about March of 2020, when the COVID pandemic happened. Even the road leading up to the main entrance of the park is special. It's beautiful. Literally, every time I take that left to turn into the road that leads to the park, once I get past the baseball field and the skateboard area on the left, it's like I'm immediately transported to another world. All right, well, maybe like another state, like Vermont and New Hampshire. I feel that every time I turn into the road. There's nothing but woods and old buildings. Some of the old buildings have maintained well, have been maintained well, like the old fire museum and the train museum. They're awesome. They're very well preserved, and people enjoy them. And some are just old cement structures. But all around, there is just old growth forest, canopy trees, some of which are 100 years or older, and all sorts of wildlife that would be displaced. The Bear Cove Back River area was designated as an area of critical environmental concern and a wildlife sanctuary. I don't know, but I saw it on the sign. It said wildlife sanctuary, so I could be wrong. I'm not an expert, but I saw it on the sign. So maybe that's a different area that's designated, but, or maybe it was a misprint. But anyway, it's one of my favorite places to go. I go there every morning. I love it. I enjoy the nature and the peace that it gives you when you're there. There's no place else like it. Let me see, I'm almost done here. So I bring my dog Gloss there, and before that, it was Jonah. But the park's enjoyed and shared by everyone, and we all have the same thing in common. We love and appreciate this beautiful natural resource. Hard as it is for me to admit, I'm a senior citizen myself now, 65 years old, so I can relate, and I'm going to need resources, too. And I'm glad I can still enjoy the park with my mobility. And I enjoy going there and walking around the area. But I just think it would be a travesty to cut all that and destroy that almost five acres of old growth forest, bulldozers and chainsaws and pave it over. I just think it would be a travesty. And for me, as a senior, I'd rather have my legacy be that I helped preserve Bear Cove as it is and set aside many decades to come for other generations to enjoy and explore. Thank you.
Thank you. So the wildlife sanctuary questions come up, Susan, can you address that?
Yeah, so I did, I did address it earlier. There was a vote in the 1980s of town meeting to seek that designation, but as I stated, under state law, you cannot legally designate town-owned property as a wildlife sanctuary at some point in decades past. And maybe it was the Bear Cove Park Committee, I don't know, who erected a sign at the corner of Fort Hill Street that says Bear Cove Park, and underneath it, it says, I believe, 250-acre wildlife sanctuary, and then it also has a Bear Cove Fire Museum sign and some other signs. It's, it's not factually or legally correct, but that sign has been there for decades. But it's not, it's not true.
Understood.
It's not true. And I note, as far as the pedestrian areas where people run, ride bikes, strollers, between the gates, none of that is being touched. So this is right next door to the fire museum. And I just want to make it clear, everyone, there's been a few references, the Bear Cove Park, as we said, the National Park Service has had the town separate, like designate and protect the park, that none of, none of this type of development can ever happen kind of within the park itself, and that this is, this is not in the park. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Up front here, go ahead.
Lest you think everyone here is--
If you could name an address, ma'am.
Oh, Jenny Palu, 219 Hersi Street. Lest you think everyone here is against the senior center, that's not true. The great majority of people who are sitting here are very much in favor of it and have been working hard. And I think the design crew has listened to us quite well, attempted to reduce some of the spaces. As far as the birds and the bees and the monkeys in the trees, I want them to stay there. We're not taking over the whole entire park. And I can't, I've lived in this town for more than 40 years, and I'm at the point where I'm not going to benefit from Foster School. I, I have benefited from the fire department coming and lugging me away, but that, I don't really want to use that either. But I do want to use a new senior center. I mean, I am going to be 85 years old in a week. That's aged. And I need someplace to go where people know my name, where they're friendly, where I can engage in playing games, or I don't exercise quite clearly. But I'm telling you that this is a project worth a tax increase. I mean, I don't want it any more than you do, but if I'm going to have to pay more taxes, I'd rather have it be for a new senior center.
Thank you, Jenny. In the back, go ahead.
I am the Reverend Dr. Susan Keynes. I live at 5 Beals Cove Road. I'm not giving my condo number because when I worked on the leash law for Bear Cove Park, I had spikes put behind my tires and buckets of nails put there, too. So I'm not giving you my condo number. However, I, I would like to say, to address the comments that Susan has said, yes, and I commend you on everything you said about that and the thoroughness with which you presented it. However, there are holes in all of these things that humans construct, including knowledge bases. And one of them is, and most people would probably agree with me on this, is that wildlife, and when I say wildlife, I mean primarily birds that are not known to the citizens of this wonderful community. We have, the birds do not recognize the limits, but there is a major theory that governs why, if you build this, you are going to turn Bear Cove Park into your backyards. In your backyards, where you feed the birds, you have winter residents and some that visit, but primarily the ones that you are caring for in your backyards are not why we have parks and preserves. We have those because of island biogeographic theory, which I've said before. But to reiterate, if birds that come from Latin America to North America are expecting to find places where they can reproduce, mate and reproduce, if those places are cut and chopped with trails and new buildings, they will not reproduce. They may fly back to South America, they may come up again and try again, but once again, where they've historically gone is not there. And that is going on all over the world. Before we had a climate crisis that was recognized and articulated by scientists, the loss of biodiversity in the sixth extinction was the major environmental crisis. Whether or not you all knew about it or not, I wrote my dissertation on that at Columbia University. And so that fact that if we put something else in there, we're not only cutting and chopping up that park or the parts that are not in the park before you get to the gate, the wildlife doesn't care. The birds are one of the major species that keeps our insects under control. And if we had more of them, we wouldn't have to spray for West Nile and everything else. The great crested flycatchers do that. And so do all the flycatchers. But how many of you in this room even know what a great crested flycatcher looks like? And if you don't know it's there and you don't know what it looks like, you're not going to miss it. And I have always spoken for wildlife since I was four years old and spoke up in my town meeting where I grew up. At any rate, the, the cutting and chopping of Bear Cove Park is going to destroy it. The more I blocked off trails long ago when I was on the Bear Cove Park Committee, and I've been involved with that park for eight years, I've taken a brief hiatus because I don't like being attacked. However, if we keep cutting and chopping trails, you get inbreeding depression. Either they won't mate, or when they do mate and reproduce, it's not going to last. And you're going to have in that park, in 484 acres, you're going to have birds in your backyard. And we don't have parks and preserves to have backyard species.
One minute, one minute. Go ahead, one minute.
Okay, so there is a shortage of, of field biologists in this country. In fact, I've read about that in New York Times and several other places. There are very few people who know the species of birds by song. I know all the songs in the eastern forests, whether it's insect, bird, or mammal. There are very few people like that. Why? Because we aren't doing a very good job in environmental education, and that's what I spent my career doing at all levels in all sectors of society. Senior centers could be doing that better. In the planning of this, when, when you build this, because I feel this is a fait accompli, and I felt that since the beginning, there needs to be some very important programming around how you use the outdoors for seniors. I'm a senior, and I'm a big senior. I mean, I'm older than I look. People tell me I'm younger than, I look younger than I am, but I walk in that park and I walk every trail in that park so I can stay fit. And while I'm out there, I'm doing population studies. I've stopped documenting it because I have other concerns right now with what I'm doing with my time. But somebody has to say what I say because I'm one of the few people who has a background in this.
Time is expired. Could you wrap it up?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pott.
My name is Dick Pott. I live at 3 Holly Hawk Lane. I've been a resident of Hingham, my wife and I, for 48 years. I'll be 91 years old in December. I am active at the senior center. I volunteer, I use the senior center, I am selling my home, and I'm going to live at Linden Ponds with my wife. I will continue to use the senior center because all of my friends are at the senior center. The senior center, it seems that most of the people that have talked today have talked about the birds and the bees and the crows and the turkeys. They're all over, they're in my backyard. They get a right to be there, God love them, but we have a right to have a senior center that represents a place where people like me and the majority of the people in this room that showed up tonight, they're the silent majority. They don't get up and talk for hours about things that aren't even factual. They know what they want. We have worked with the Council on Aging, we have worked with our Select Board, we have worked with our Building Committee. I was on the Council on Aging with Beth. And 13 years ago, we proposed a new senior center. And at that time, the state felt, based on the requirements of your population and your senior population, that we have a 20,000-square-foot facility, 13 years ago. And here we are today, still in a 5,000-square-foot facility. I was at Mahjong today, and we had 21 people jammed into the living room to play Mahjong. It's a disgrace. When people ask me what my, what my senior center is like, I say, come and visit us, and you'd be amazed. And they are amazed that a town like ours does not have a decent place for our seniors. And if this goes on and on, we'll never have a decent place for our seniors. I can remember 13 years ago, talking to Mary Power, and Mary was on the Select Board at the time, and she said, Dick, we're going to get you a senior center. Well, 13 years later, that still has not happened. It's about time it happened. I'm behind the senior center, the majority of the people in this room are behind a senior center, we're going to work our asses off to get one. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back, is it Amy, is that your hand? Come on up, come on up.
Yeah, I'll let her just go.
Okay, all right. Mr. Denapoli, come on up.
It's warm in this room. Hello, Diane Denapoli, 16 Gardner Street. Thank you for taking my question. Couple little questions, less complicated, I think, than others. The site we hear is multi-generational, intergenerational. That sounds wonderful. So I've asked a couple people, you may want to, maybe the next time you look at that presentation, explain how are people not in the 16 and above going to use that site? You know, I, maybe it's on after-hours, maybe it's rental space, but I think when you're looking at getting this to the two-third at the ballot, you really need to explain to someone like me who, I'm older than I look. So I'm not quite a senior, sorry, yet, but we need to know, you need to sell it to everybody. I don't know how else to put it, but what am I getting out of it? What are the kids getting out of it? You have to kind of explain that a little better, or just add that maybe to the design, what space is actually going to be open to the public? How is it going to be used? Why is that good for me? What are we going to be doing in there? I'm for it. I love the, I'm going to support a senior center, but I'd love a multi-center, multi-age center so we all can really use it. And we always talk about, there's no community paper, there's no feeling of community. We've lost so much in COVID. Kids, adults are on their phones. This is the opposite. But let's, let's flush that out, let's make it real, let's bring people to sites, whether it's Marshfield, Needham has an amazing intergenerational site, so we can see that. So that's sort of my, what I would love to see next time of where, how am I going to connect to the pool? Is there going to be a shuttle if that comes in? What does it look like in five years? The flip side, I'd like to know what it's going to cost, too, because, I mean, you know, we're all trying to figure that out. I can afford-- Is there going to be a shuttle if that comes in? What does it look like in five years? The flip side, I'd like to know what it's going to cost, too. Because, I mean, you know, we're all trying to figure that out. I can afford this, can't really afford that. So let's make choices based on facts. What am I going to get out of it? Sorry to be selfish, but that's what people ask. And then how much is it going to cost? The last thing is, I noticed you said the new site's going to be on where there was an ammunition spot before. Have you considered that? Do we have to dig that up? I mean, that can be kind of complicated when you're going over a site like that. That's all been vetted and that won't add additional costs or environmental problems?
Yeah, the whole entire, on both sides of the river, as everyone knows, used to be a naval depot in both Wayman and Hingham with hundreds of buildings, railroad tracks and everything else. So there's not a lot of old growth left there anymore. It's all fairly new in the last 50 years. But the area around the building, like all the buildings had different uses. And this building in particular, the preliminary, all the preliminary studies show that it's mostly issues inside the building, like maybe asbestos, lead paint, those types of things. There's not like a major environmental cleanup site there based on the consultants' environmental.
So when you moved it and you showed that little red square that was a footprint of a former building, there's not going to be a bad surprise underneath there as far as, oh, it's an extra million to take rocks and debris out that's already been vetted? Or is that something that would come in the second phase?
We've vetted it in the past. So during the study, we're doing additional environmental studies currently, which we should have some information on very shortly. But based on the preliminary information and based on other buildings like Susan was talking about, we've already incorporated into the study those costs. And whatever costs that we do bring in the subsequent phases will include removal of that building and any remediation that has to happen. So that is part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add to that, Dan?
Hi, my name is Dan Pallotta. I'm the project manager for the, I'm the newest member of the team. I have less time than you do. But I can tell you that, you know, I'm glad to hear someone did talk about costs. There's a lot of steps on costs coming. We have to, we have to look at the design on four different planes and four different stages while looking at the costs. Each one of those stages has different information added. As the designer just indicated, we have had some assessment done on that building. There'll be more assessment done on the abatement and on the lead removal. All those costs will be identified and put into the cost of the project. The cost of the project will be something that is debated by the community and open and transparent, and you'll watch it develop with the building. So you, interactively, everyone in this room is going to watch as the building has shrunk, the costs moved a little this way. As the building has been refined, the costs may move a little bit this way. We're going to go through a lot of that between now and March when we get ready to start to engage for town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. A couple more. Yvette, Yvette, did you have your hand up? Did I see that earlier? Come on up.
Yvette Cantor, 442 Main Street, also a member of the Friends for the Center for Active Living. I'm here for the seniors. I'm here for all of you because I want to make sure that after all these years and all the promises and all the schools and the safety building and the override and the water company, you finally get a Center for Active Living. We've talked about this for a long time, and there's lots of conversation going on here that's very valid, the costs, the size, the programming. But for me, the most important thing is the seniors and the programming. And the programming has been built from people who actually know what they're doing. So I won't even attempt to do that. Thank you, Jennifer. From there, we have to decide what the size is. And I know it seems like a lot, but I think we've been talking about Marshfield a bit, a like, a like town, about the same population, their senior population, and Beth is going to keep me honest here, 28%. A few years ago, they doubled their size to 25,000 square feet. It's a like for like. When you keep delaying building, it's costing you more. Building costs have gone up. I'm going to go 30% in the last three to four years. That was before our president put on the tariffs. As we keep doing this, it's going to get more costly. So we talk about, we're all in agreement, we want a senior center. We want a Center for Active Living. And if that is the truth, then we need to come together and we got to figure out what it's going to look like. And so I invite you all to come, to have that conversation, to figure out what the number is, to figure out what the programming should be, and to come to conclusions so that we can bring something to our town that represents what is good for our whole community. That's what we need to do. We're not going to get anywhere if we fight. We're not going to get anywhere if we keep disagreeing. This team, and I've been with them for two years, it's a lot of meetings, people. It's a lot of detail. But I invite you to the whole thing, the more the merrier. What I hope we don't have is that we stand up at town meeting and people say, "I'm not for this, but never engaged." I said this to our, to AdCom. Come see what it is. Come see what happens in this place because it's magical. My mother passed a year and a half ago, almost two years, and she lived with us for 12 years. And that Center for Active Living kept her alive, I have no doubt. She had her family around her, she was with us. There's only so much two boys can really do to keep grandma going. But she played mahjong, she played bridge, she went with her friends. And it kept her mind and her body moving. And everyone in this town deserves that. Everyone deserves it. And each one of these people that sit here and is still paying taxes, put your kids through schools, gave you your override, gave you your water company and gave you a public safety building. So now all those people have to come back. If you mean it, that you believe there should be a senior center and you're behind these wonderful people and us at some point, I'm not willing to give in either whoever said that, not yet. I'll join in mahjong soon enough. But if you're telling the truth, then come join us, tell us what the number is, tell us what the programming should be, and let's figure out how we take it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've been at it an hour and a half. I'll take a couple more. If speakers could maybe bring up a different perspective than what we've heard, that'd be great. But yeah, we'll take a couple more. Sir, you're right there.
John Germain, 4 Parkers Drive. I'm a member of the Hingham Advisory Committee. I voted in favor of funding the development costs for the project. It was the hardest vote that I had because of the size. And I think that actually was the topic of tonight's meeting, was to review the preliminary design of the building. That's what I'd like to discuss. So my first question is, in the auditorium, are the seats anchored?
Yes, 60 seats are anchored currently, and the others are flexible seats.
Okay. And then if I saw your schematic, right, on the left-hand side or next to it is a classroom?
Correct.
Are there desks? Is that anything anchored or is that mobile?
Those are all mobile. That's an open space.
Okay. So one of the things, I did go down to Marshfield to look at their facility. I did not see an auditorium. I don't know how many senior centers have auditoriums. What they had was sort of a big, what I would call a great room, and the partitions that you can break the room up into smaller rooms. You know, in terms of trying to find space, I don't know how that would work in terms of, you know, the programming, but it makes a lot of sense to me as you look at, okay, how can we maybe make this smaller? Because it's, there are a lot of projects coming down the pike and they are expensive. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura, go ahead.
Hi there, Laura Marwell, 30 Summit Drive. Something I'm a little confused about, that's striking me, is that I'm, this is referred to as a senior center, as a Center for Active Living, as a multi-generational center. So who is our target market here? And I'm concerned about mission creep. You know, we have the mission creep.
Let us speak.
When a project gets beyond its original scope. And so the senior center, I think of as focusing on a certain population, but I'm hearing other populations brought in here. And we have buildings in town or things that we've built. I can think of the community center. Somebody mentioned the library. We have the new, the building on, at the bathing beach, and these are underutilized. So we have spaces that we can use for various populations. And so I just want to be a little bit clear on who we're focusing on. It's probably, you know, maybe we ought not to grow it into a multi-generational facility if we're looking to manage our resources carefully. Thank you.
Yeah, Beth, you want to take that? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the space, the size, the features were not designed for the under 60 demographic. It was designed for the 60-plus. And this is not an intergenerational center, but the policy for participation is going to be what it is now, which is programming is prioritized for 60-plus. If space allows, adults under age 60 can register for a program. The way we are trying to build intergenerational engagement, and I am very passionate about that, I studied gerontology for years. I did my thesis on intergenerational engagement. It's a huge part of our lives, mutually rewarding sage and seekers, bringing together the community of all ages together. So how we want to do that is through intergenerational programming. And it is in no way, the space was not designed to accommodate all those other, you know, those aged cohorts.
Thank you. All right, I'll take one more. Right there, ma'am, in the back, with the yellow, is it yellow? Yeah, come on.
Hi, Connie Cummings, 42 Hershey Street. Thanks and kudos to the building committee. It looks like absolutely a stunning site that will serve people very well. But I have some concerns about the scope and the price to the taxpayers. I, too, am a senior citizen, hoping to retire with my husband in the next year. Will be on a fixed income. We've seen our taxes go up and up recently. And I think what I'm struggling with is, and somebody here can help me, is we're looking at this in isolation, but I hear about other town projects like roofs on old school buildings that need to be replaced. And that's a need. Or the pool that we're kind of made a lot of movement towards, but it seems like that's going to take a lot of money to get that up and running. And that'll serve, that'll truly be intergenerational. So I'm kind of wondering, when do we get the information about the big picture on this to our tax dollars?
Yeah, great question. So you mean this project?
This project, but also the needs of the whole town when it comes to buildings.
So this project, once we get the number in the fall, early fall, we'll be, we're going to have on, online, a calculator where you can put in your assessed value and you'll get the tax impact. So you'll know that then. In terms of the other capital needs you discuss, we're working on a capital plan that's going to be presented probably at economic forum in the fall or later in the year. And a lot of those items that you mentioned will be discussed.
Okay, thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you very much. All right, everybody, you know, we've gone about an hour and 45 minutes. First of all, if you would like to continue to submit public comments, you can email the board. So feel free to email us. We got a couple of comments the last couple of days on this project. So continue to email the board. We're also going to have another meeting, a couple of other meetings discussing this project. Probably going to have a joint one with advisory, advisory committee. I talked to Carol about the dates and when it's best to do that. So there'll be other opportunities to comment as well. The building committee is still meeting as well. So thank you. Thank you for coming. If you're welcome to stay for the rest of the agenda, you can do that as well. Thanks, everybody. If you're going to leave, if you can leave just quietly so I can wrap up the meeting, that'd be great. I'll give everybody a minute to head up. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate the input. I'm sorry, yeah, you can do that now. We need to adjourn immediately. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn the building. A motion to adjourn the building.
I second that motion.
All those in favor, by roll call.
Aye.
Thank you, Beth, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Stephen Young.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Beth, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. I think we heard a lot, public comment. Does anybody have an additional public comment? All right, seeing none. If everybody can keep their voices down, if I can adjourn the meeting, we need to be on record to adjourn a meeting in terms of legal context of doing that. So with that, next item intended to adjourn, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I would second that motion. All those in favor, by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
And I'm an eyes-walls, a motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a great evening.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.